And then next we had one day I was like.
Yeah, only thing like. They have a wood fireplace on the. There's there's nothing that beats that in the summer.
Right.
Things pull out.
Right. Uh, I don't. The idiot thinks part of that we're standing there. They need to be. Right. I mean, I think that we don't have to. I think it's for basketball games. Something if you have. That's also very meaningful. Pride and city. That what? Oh. Cheer on. That what they call? You know, that's what I. I'm sorry. You don't have to go to work for it. I think.
No.
Korea and Japan. And whereas Albion Brand to the N double A C P was founded in nineteen thirty-three by Albion residents committed to nonviolent resistance, moral persuasions, effective lobbying and protestations and whereas the Albion brand to the N double A C P represents and advocates for the increasingly diverse interest of people marginalized by racism, ethnocentrism, xenophobia, sexism, poverty, albyism and all other forms of oppression. And whereas Albion branch of the N double A C P should be honored for nine decades of service and leadership in organizing campaigns for equity and public assistance, including thousands of dollars in collegiate scholarships, approximately eight thousand backpacks over the past twenty years and countless awards for community service, leadership and activism that benefits our people of Albion. And whereas Albion brand to the N double A C P led the successful nineteen fifty-three effort to desegregate Westwood Elementary School and continues as a leading local champion of voter registration and election protection campaigns, truth and journalism, community policing, legal redress and acts of racial discrimination and community healing. And whereas Albion branch of the N double A C P will commemorate both the ninetieth year of necessary work in their future plans for education and education during February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three celebration with its intergenerational and diverse members, allies and partners. Now therefore, I, Victoria Garcia Snyder, along with the members of the Albion City Council, do hereby congratulate all members of the N double A C P as you celebrate your ninetieth anniversary. And so I understand that it was a wonderful event that was held to celebrate their ninety-year recognition.
Yeah. And I still have this because Mr. Dunklin has been in Milesville. He gets out today as a matter of fact, so.
All right, let's do it. And next we will have our CEO of the E D C to come forward and give us information. Is the green light on? Push it again.
Oh, it's green now.
There you go.
All right. So hi, I'm Virgie. I think all of you know me. You get emails from me like twenty times a week, so can't miss me. And no, you can't unsubscribe. There's no way to do that, so. I wanted to have a chance and I appreciate Councilperson Williams for hearing me out on this and giving me a time to maybe chat and help me get this on the agenda. I, as you know, I have a passion for housing and I came with significant experience on housing and I also recognize that here in Albion, it's going to be probably our biggest economic driver for the next couple of years. So I think those are critical points. And then the housing need will only explode now that we have fortunately Ford coming in fifteen minutes away and people will need to live somewhere. So my phone is ringing off the hook with questions about how somebody can build housing or how can they buy houses and rehab them. And so there's lots already happening. People have started to realize that this could be a housing metropolis. So trying to kind of get ahead of that, I think twenty twenty-six was when or is when the plant is supposed to be opening. So we have no time to lose. And when I came to the initial conversation for city planning for the, I heard housing, housing, housing. So I thought, okay, let me look at the city strategic plan, a comprehensive plan and the E D C strategic plan and see where there's overlap and some ways we can bring this together. So the first page just kind of summarizes that. Again, looking at both of those plans and which are referenced later in the document and the fact that housing needs vary by the demographics, the geographics, the people you're trying to serve, what the needs are. And in a very complex way, funding streams follow those needs. And so the same person who might or developer who might do market rate is not going to have the same skill set and toolbox to be able to use low income. So there's a whole continuum of housing needs. And it might make sense if the, if there's a point person in the city to be able to go to when you want to bring housing to the city. Also, C D B G, we knew that program was changing. The change that happened was they moved those dollars that are supporting mixed use from the M E D C platform over to the Mishta platform. So from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation platform over to the Michigan State Housing Development Authority platform. So as that is a platform that handles most of the housing in the state, that makes sense because now this mixed use is going to become one of the biggest housing components. On the second page, outlines the solution and accountability standards that I would offer would be a good step to hold someone accountable for this. There's a list of stakeholders. I've been interviewing and talking and asking and lots of feedback. And these are the stakeholders that I've been able to identify thus far. And again, each of those would represent maybe a different style of housing or a different funding source that might bring that housing. So lots of different types of housing that can be built, which here is listed. These are the actual types. So this is sort of the continuum of housing. Market rate would be, you know, the most expensive. Someone doesn't really need help to buy that. They're they're probably going to be able to to reach that because they've been working, you know, in correcting their credit and reaching that score. So then as you work through the list, the different types of housing that you might need some assistance to find your way into the first time. And then some of them says where you you'll be because you need a lot, like a lot of supports. And so those supportive housing are the types that we would have in some of our low income areas or some of the, some veteran housing, for example, that we would design specifically for veterans. Senior housing that we would design specifically for seniors. Then, so those are the two types of ways to measure whether we've been successful in increasing housing would be the types and quantity of housing and also the stakeholders that felt that they were heard. The rest of the document are really references. So the next page is sort of a picture of that continuum highlighting the missing metal. And so Mishta has, as we've talked about before, the Mishta, the Missing Metal Program that highlights how to bring housing in some of those components. That's going to be your workforce people that are working two or three jobs trying to manage a household. So that how do we help those folks? And that's the missing metal component. The rest of, like I said, the rest of the document are excerpts from both the the comprehensive plan and the E D C plan. Or on the corridors, we know that we want to develop those corridors so that they're something that we can really be excited about when someone comes into the city to look at the city as a possible place to live or work. The next page, number six, shows you the prominent, our, our site, R R C priority sites, redevelopment ready city. Community, sorry, okay. Redevelopment ready community. And we've highlighted those areas and those are all zoned and to be developed hopefully with residential. So again, more housing noted on the R R C sites. And then those are highlighted on the next three pages. So the Austin Block, the Union Steel Barrier, the Derompo School, those are areas that we're currently marketing to housing developers to try to get them to be interested in those particular areas. What I think is also interesting is if you look at page ten and you look at the corridors and you see the green areas. So the green areas are mixed use. I think it makes sense for the same contact here at Albion, which would normally be the E D C to manage a question or a intake request for commercial. If upstairs from that is going to be residential, it makes a lot of sense for that developer to work with one person. And we just have a significant amount of mixed use here, which is like an incredible opportunity that some cities do not have. So this is a real plus in the zoning area that we've accomplished. I certainly had nothing to do with it, but it's here. And I think that really helps attract, you know, residential. And again, I think it makes sense to align the contact with that, with that same individual. So then, then the last couple of pages are just some highlights of some metrics and some requirements that were in both the city and the E D C plan. So my proposal would be, I would love to help. I would love to be sort of, I would love, first of all, I'd love to see one person be a point person because we have a lot of housing development that's happening. And it might be more sense if one person is the the go-to person. And then the second, I guess, proposal would be, would love to step in and do that from, from the role that I'm currently in. I think some people already see that as that role. I think some of that role has drifted away in the prior administration of the E D C. So I'm sort of trying to corral some of that back and take on that level of responsibility and accountability. So I'd like to, I'd like to present that as an option. And so I'm just kind of, you know, I'm happy for feedback or that would be the presentation. Or if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Councilman Lawler, thank you so much. So for the Union Steel Barrier?
Yes.
Which is in Wood Precinct? How do you plan to? Maybe you can't answer this question. If you can't, that's fine. How do you plan to market by the river? I mean, by the railroad tracks?
So I have a developer looking currently at both five hundred and five oh one. I hope I'm in the right neighborhood with this. And the one does have the railroad tracks right up by it. So if you ask me if I was a developer, what would I do? I would put a berm between that railroad and the housing. And so probably HUD's going to say, I really am not going to let you get this far. So you'll have to back out here. And then they'll do a sound test. And so there'll be a, so one of the big things that HUD has some real specifics on is the level of sound noise or the noise pollution from that train. So that's one of, those are the hurdles that you have to kind of overcome when you're trying to put residential next to a railroad.
Thank you so much, Councilman Prince.
Just to piggyback on Councilman Lawler's, that particular spur gets one three-car train a week. It's, I would hardly call it loud. It's not in comparison to that, the train that goes in front of my house. So.
Good question.
That's right. Yeah. So, so this proposal is coming to us. Has your board approved this as a, as a possibility? Or are we preempting that work?
So the board has asked me to explain what the goals are going to be for F Y twenty-three. And as I put the goal sheet together, which they've already looked at once and they'll look at again. I also said I was going to put a housing document together because housing is such a big component of the other document. So I would anticipate that if this is the need and I'm able to explain this is the need. I would, I would expect I'm going to get support. I don't see why I wouldn't have support for this. Only because it is the biggest economic driver and without the housing, we aren't going to be able to manage much else. So it also really helps bring back into the E D C some of the work that city has taken on in, in the, in lieu of having someone who was interested in this line of work. And also, you know, I think other areas of the city, other leaders in the city have taken on some things that maybe can come back to the E D C too. So there'll be other presentations to other groups that are saying, hey, I'm, I'm here. I finally got my feet under me. I am happy to start doing some of that work. So it really does. To me, I think the big benefit is we need a ton of infrastructure work. The E D C needs a lot of infrastructure out of the city. And this would alleviate, you know, take that housing, put it over here as a project model. And then infrastructure can be the focus because without infrastructure, I can't do the housing or the commercial growth or the industrial growth. So kind of trying to get some lanes lined up that will help us all be successful.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Virgie, so one of the hot topics we've had here in the community a lot lately was around rental certification and the negative impact that it could possibly have on tenants and also landlords. With us as a city not necessarily having the capacity to help the landlords to maintain affordable housing for tenants across the board. One of my questions over the past year has been, how can we ensure that we won't have displacement? Because we know that we need this because of the housing stock going down. But how can we ensure that we don't have placement now that it has passed? I'm sure the landlords are still left out there in the wind. As far as your background in housing, would you or do you think you'd be able to help those landlords to find funding that would limit what they would have to increase the rents on the tenants who currently live there or potential potential tenants going forward so that they can maintain affordable housing?
Sure. Great question, especially here with that rental certification just passing. And we had the same question come up Sunday night. We had a book study discussion, read community discussion at Sterling Books and Brew. Thank you very much. And the question that did come up, will the rental certification increase the cost of the living? Which then will increase the rent. Have we, how have we accomplished? What have we accomplished? So first of all, the rental certification should not have put in new requirements. So the rental certification should just be just maintaining that fee and making sure that you're certified. But it doesn't give you any new requirements like from a, from a building perspective because that's covered under what was already there. So the fact that there's going to be an inspection, you know, might, it might trigger some repairs, but it isn't anything new. We do have the two programs that Mishta is working with, which is the My Half and the My Hope. And the My Half program is the one that gives dollars to help avoid eviction. And then the My Hope program is the one that you can get up to twenty-five thousand dollars of repairs. If you are either, you either own a low, own a home as yourself as a low-income homeowner, or you are renting to someone who is in a low-income status. So those buckets of dollars are available and we have a consortium right now of three groups that are ready to help do a train the trainer with Mishta so they can begin to help people get those scaled out, those applications. So I think that'll be the first tool that you'll see that that comes along. The next couple of rounds of tools will be defined as we need them. So I think we'll have to see what kind of happens. We do know that R T B G dollars are good for this. So the rural development. We believe that Mishta will still have money to help. So, so some of the low income can be somewhat subsidized so that it helps keep the incomes, keeps it lower. The crux of the issue is if we're successful at growing Albion, the home values are going to increase because we're, supply and demand is going to make that happen. So the economics of the transaction, there will be an increase that occurs. Hopefully, we're also seeing increases in wages so that the wages increases keep up with the housing prices. And that means that as my area of the E D C is responsible for making sure that we have good quality jobs and good, and high-paying jobs and training that we would work all that in tandem.
Okay. I have a question. In terms of, in terms of the Albion community, in terms of leadership, I guess I'm not exactly sure what is happening right now or why is this needed? Because I see E D C and I see the city working together. So what is the problem?
So I think developers are working with multiple people in the city. And we are, we aren't able really to direct them to one person who can say this is what's available, this is what's not. We've got a lot of folks that have pitched in, not just the city, not just the E D C, but we've got a lot of people. So there's a, there's a, there's a lot of people that, you know, I, we were just having a conversation the other day about a piece of property. And when I said, oh, I think this is what I hear is happening. I'm working with person A. Someone else said, oh, I just talked to this person B about that same property last week. And so, and then somebody thought person C also thought they were doing something there. So it's a lot of time and effort that is either the developer's time or our time or, you know, planning's time. So it probably would be good to have some, somebody that all that filters through so that we have, have an idea what's happening. I believe that's part of the issue right now.
So like, I think in your document, like one parcel of property is owned by the land bank. That realm is owned by the city. And then the Austin app. Or is it the Austin air school? Anyway, so there's different owners. So isn't that why there's different channels of conversation?
So what I was just referring to was yet another piece of property. So there's property all over the city, obviously, and there's lots of development work that's going to happen. I think the process for development and the knowledge of how development really happens should be with somebody who's got that kind of a background. And also think if the municipality itself gets hung up in doing development work and development relations. Again, what I think the E D C needs is infrastructure and there needs to be a focus on the infrastructure instead of on developing housing. And so I think it's going to make a whole lot more sense if somebody's kind of the point person for all these developers. I think the trick here is going to be to get the right developers lined up to do the right work and not maybe try to develop it in-house, right? So that, I don't think that's going to be our biggest bang for our buck. It's going to be getting the right developers that know how to bring the dollars, know how to fill out the grant work and get all that done on their, on their dime as they're, you know, making the progress on the property. So I think, and, and all of the owners, it doesn't matter who the owner is, it's who is responsible for marketing. So just like there, any property might own, be owned by somebody, but the E D C is responsible to make sure that we're using those assets appropriately and we're getting those marketed for use. So just like commercial, housing is really no different. It's an economic driver that way.
Councilman Lawler, if you have your hand up.
You got a question. Go ahead.
I, I agree with you because I've gotten three calls already from people that don't even live in Albion, who's talking about land that's here that they want purchased because when Marshall, but the, when, when the process that's happening in Marshall goes through, they're not going to have room to fit everybody. And so people are going to start moving this way. And there's already developers just trying to, to find out how much land can I get? How much, you know, I want to get this, this and this, but I'm being told this, this and this. So I, I think to have one place to run it through is, is good thinking.
I think it's gonna, I think if we have a strategy of how we want to develop, it'll, it'll be easier for everyone to say this person has got the strategy. The strategy will have been agreed upon by everybody, but this is the point person. So I think, I think you're going to see a more equitable development process through this because at least there's a point person to go to. And, and even if it's not me, even if someone else is chosen as a point person, but I think it has to sit somewhere.
And I think there's got to be some development that's going to be for people who are not rich. And then there's going to have to be some, you know, then it's going to go to your other, but if, if certain groups get together and they just want to get the ones for, the ones who are going to pay up two thousand dollars a month rent and somewhere. A person, there's some people here that can't even pay two hundred. So I think it needs to be somebody who's going to even act plan.
Councilman Prince?
So in all of this work, are you proposing to be working with vacant property? Or are you talking about all property? So if I wanted to sell my house to a developer, I would have to go through you in order for that to happen. So where do real estate agents come in?
Yeah, I'm not going to be a real estate agent. So.
Right. But, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, some private person could say they want to buy my house for the purposes of knocking it down and building an apartment building. So.
So, so.
I would then have to work with you in order to make that transaction happen? Or would you work after the transaction has happened with the person who's developing it?
So if, if someone's going to build, so I don't know how big your lot is. So, so I would assume if someone's going to build a series of apartment buildings and they're going to buy up several houses to do so, they would definitely want to come and talk with, with the housing champion.
Right.
About it, does that fit the need of the city? So one thing that we need to make sure we're getting is the housing that we want. So that's another reason why you need a housing champion because So that's another reason why you need a housing champion because. Maybe you and your three or four neighbors decide this is what? We're, we're gonna cash in, we're gonna sell our land and this is what we're gonna build. They still will have to go through zoning and they still will have to go through planning. But does it match the vision of of the city? So does it match, match the vision of the municipality? So I, no one's ever gonna say to you, you can't sell your land and you can't sell your house. But when that developer decides what they're putting there, they would want to come in, have a discussion about strategy. Get some clarity, then we would bring that developer here and then they would make their pitch. So in the end, it all ends up here because you have to pitch all these big projects. It's just who's doing all the groundwork.
So who's in charge of deciding what the scale is?
So that would come out of the comprehensive plan or the plan that the E D C has, or? It's a limitation based on zoning or limit, so we would help them sort all that out. A developer would know most of that.
Right.
But they still have to come here and say, I wanna do this. That scale of a project still has to come. Especially if they want any kind of preferential tax treatments or anything else. So? You, you have, like, you have like the development, you have the financing, and then you have the construction stage, and you're always moving through that. And all during that time, somebody has to have a pulse on that. And I, and I just feel like this is a good place, somebody should have that pulse because they can. Cause like, say they're gonna use a piece of funding that is coming through the M A D C, well, we'd wanna know. In that relationship with the M A D C, this is the piece of funding we're using or the Mishna relationship. So it's just good to keep. Somebody in the know. So that we know kind of what resources we're getting and whether we're getting enough in Albion. To do what we're gonna have to do because with Marshall developing the way it is. I'm very assertively reaching out to the state saying, help us, help you, because. You're gonna need, you know, Albion to be in the best shape it's gonna be in. So taking those asks. And combining it with housing and commercial and mixed use and industrial. Makes a whole lot of sense to have somebody at the table making those decisions. Um I'm sorry, making those recommendations.
Can I have some follow up? So it it's been my experience in twenty five years in Albion that um. That the needs are varied. And how you decide who gets priority. Uh is gonna be important. So for example, uh the college has priority for houses that faculty in the middle class. Fifty hundred thousand dollars a year administrators and their housing needs are markedly different. Than the twenty five hundred employees are gonna work at the Ford plant. Who probably make only a little bit less than that, which is markedly different. Than the majority of our citizens in Albion who are living in poverty and substandard housing that need housing. So we have a limited resource. Who gets to decide the priority of our city toward that sort of housing? And it's, and I'm hoping that it is a large group. Who will make recommendations rather than a small group making those recommendations.
Sure, so first you you have to locate the developers that do the work you want done. So you have to look at your housing continuum and decide how much of each type of housing you need. Who the developers are that are able and willing and have the time right now to do that. So you engage with them. You decide um what their priorities are within the city. So we've got the R R C priorities. But then we also have other priority areas that are not the R R C priorities, but our, our city priorities. So you have your, so you, you do the matching, like here are the sites that are available, here's what we want. And here are the funding models that are available. Be, we, maybe we want senior market rate housing. But it costs too much and we have a site in mind, that's just an example. But we really can't build that because we haven't found enough funding. And since it's market rate, it's gonna be really hard to find any kind of subsidized housing. So? That, that may be slowed up until we can figure out a funding model. Then maybe you have another type of housing and you have a site and that the, this model can attract money. So that when you say resources, it's not always about money, it's about time. So? We will, we will manage, so I will need to be hiring another staff person, obviously, to to manage all this work. That's not a problem. But when it comes to, like, we already have a planning commission. That a lot of this stuff has to go through, so not much of that is changing. I mean, it's really not changing. But the fact is, we've got to get developers warmed up to the city to come in and tell us what can you do for us? Because here's what we're shopping for. Can you do that and where can you do it and how can we help you? So the resources that we're really gonna need are environmental remediation dollars for them in these really. Really troubled areas. So? It's, it's just, it's a lot of weaving and so it's just a ton of weaving all day. And so you have your needs, you have the sites, you have funding models. Um prioritization will follow what you can fit where and how. And then it all comes to planning and if it doesn't fit the plan, then you're back to square one. So? It's a lot of give and take and um it should be a fairly transparent process. Wants developers have a site under, under option so that they aren't. You know, letting their competitive edge out of the bag. So? There's a, there's a very transparent way to do this. You can do it by naming projects with pet names or. I have all my projects named by a letter. I'm not very creative, so I have project A through. I think I'm at double G right now. So I have outlined and. And looking at and trying to figure out the prioritization for whatever thirty, thirty projects right now.
What my point is, is that it's from the fact that we live in a, in the economy that we live in. That it's gonna be far easier for you to find developers willing to build houses at a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy, two hundred thousand dollars. Than it is to build uh a facility that will help the people in our community now who need it most. And that's the concern, right? Because it takes years to get federal funding or grant funding for housing the poor. Um and it's not that hard to find people who are willing to invest in real estate at the higher end. Um if there's, if there's a need for it. So that's my.
If it doesn't fit the market study though, and it doesn't fit your requirements, because we have a chart of what we know we have to build. And we've, we've, we've labeled that, we know what it is, we know what we've got, we know what we've taken off the books. We're, we're taking that twenty seventeen. Miles and studying marching up forward. Now, one could argue, hey, the Marshall thing, like now, who knows?
That are doing new one.
And so we could say, who knows, right? But we could also say. This, the low income probably hasn't changed much. Those needs probably haven't changed. We have the wild. Flower crossing that brought in a hundred thousand or so dollars per unit and. You buy the property, you rent the lot, so you're, you're almost a homeowner, you're a homeowner but not a lot owner. But it's a step in the right direction. And so that developers, you know, developing, continue to develop. But you have to be, you have to say, I want low income housing or? I wanna preserve what I have and improve it. So part of this is not just building new, but it's preserving. Some of the low income housing that we have that maybe we could, could take a little T L C. There is. Lots of money for preserving and you're right, it sometimes can take a year to attract the right funding model because you're competing for it. But again, you hire professional developers who are interested in that land to help you with that. So it's not like this. Body or the city body or even my staff have to become developers. It's just that you have a developer here who can help manage that process and that flow and we're just in a. Pinch, right? We're just at a place where we just need to do the right thing and we need to kind of get moving in that direction. So? You always work within the parameters of what the community needs are, that that never changes.
So, well, the community needs change.
Community needs change, but the, but no one should be coming in, building what you don't want.
So keeping in mind that we still have a very lengthy agenda ahead of us. And this should have only taken ten minutes. Um and I know we can be here all night, probably speaking on this topic. Um can, if we can.
Can we get to my lines?
Council Williams, yeah.
Okay, um so throughout the discussion, it's um. You made some very valid points, but also in touching on points that we've been discussing. Um I know I've definitely been one that's been very vocal about housing. Um my precinct along with uh Councilman Reed's precinct being those that have the most land bank owned properties in them. Uh we're very concerned about housing and we're also concerned about displacement. Um now, being that the city does not have any housing plans currently. And we don't have any staffing and in conversation that we've had. That I've had with the city manager, um the timeframe for hiring the staff that we would need to be able to. Um create the housing that we need here, I've been told that it may take up to five years to build that capacity. Now, um we know that remediation is a big issue. One of the lots that we looked at for placing a home here recently was one that was contaminated because it had been formerly a um. A gas station, right? Something we weren't here for, none of us probably were alive when it was open. But um. Are you saying that you would be able to take a developer from? Beginning to end, not you, but the person in this role. Would be able to take a person from beginning to end and putting people into healthy housing.
Right.
Through what's in this document.
Right, and as I've said, in my experience, every development process takes at least three years. A year to vision and put it together, attract the right developer, manage the process. A year to get the financing under control and then a year to build.
Okay.
And that, that is if you have consistent staffing and you're, you're staying, like, you're staying focused and. You have this as your target. So um it would take dedication at the E D C side, whoever your housing champion would be. To make sure you're holding them accountable, what, what, where are you in this process? So we have a, we have. Tracking projects so we can explain about how far we are and. Where, you know, whether this is under contract and whether this is off the limits for someone else to look at. So? We would have a way to manage all that. If it's a land bank piece of property. We'll be working with the land bank and they would have to make sure that, that the project fits their needs. And so you're all, it's all about weaving the needs together. Um but the land bank does own a lot of property here and it would be good strategically. You know, work with them to make sure that we're developing as much as we can on the land once it's been remedied.
Thank you.
So like I said, I'm sure we could be here all night. So I do appreciate your time and getting us the information. Um and if anybody wants to make outreach to Virgie to follow up, I'm sure she would be happy to respond to any emails or phone.
Thank you.
All right, public comments. Uh so if we have anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council in regards to a specific agenda item. You have the opportunity to do that right now and you would have three minutes to do so.
Does it have to be an agenda?
Yes.
Yes. So are you, is it about the housing? You can, cause it's an agenda item. You can speak on it.
Thanks, sorry, Jim Stewart, two oh five, West Oak in Albion and uh I'm a project manager, it's what I do and. So the idea of this really excites me because we've all been so frustrated with the housing not going where it needs to go. So I would say let's not, uh you know, this sounds like, uh well, I'm just saying, um. Or Councilman French and Councilman Williams, you're. The very things you were addressing to me makes a lot of sense to improve a person. I didn't like a puzzle. If I spread all the puzzle pieces out and I'm working on it. If Donovan comes over and tries to work on it, it's not gonna make as much sense. But if you're gonna have some, somebody who's responsible for all those pieces and parts, I think that makes. Sense or at least has oversight into it. Um. And this person would have understanding of all the visions and the plans and uh. What we've got going and what we still need. So we're gonna need to plug holes still. What's already in progress, we need more of that. But we do need this and now I'm pursuing this avenue and I'm pursuing these, these different uh role, these uh people to fill the roles. Um I like that there'd be proactive marketing then to fulfill these voids in the plan like we talked about. Yeah, it's gonna be really hard to get this. Certain types of housing, but you can be proactive on that and work on that because you know it's pretty hard and the other stuff can come easier. And then I like how for these people who are calling from out of town and they're calling you, Councilman Ray, Councilman Ray, and you can say, go here.
Yes.
For guidance, I like that part. So I, I think we absolutely need this. If we're gonna move forward, we gotta have some. I mean, this is like a great springboard for moving forward. So I'm kind of excited about the idea if you can't tell. Thank you.
Anybody else? I can stand and address council?
Head off right now and just making a comment as a citizen. Um I think we need a mixed bag of housing. Um just to satisfy those who have either own their home, have equity, want to stay here. But we also need to maintain what Albion is, which is, is all of us, right? It's people that are low income. It's people who are black, people who are white. And so? I like the mixed bag idea in terms of creating a sustainable and affordable housing for people who cannot. Maybe buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, um but then also appealing to the young professionals who want to stay here and can afford that. Um I also like the idea too of when you, when you fundraising and you're doing development work. It's better to pull your request into a Santa request versus? I go to the donor and I ask for fifty thousand and Ms Lawler goes to the donor, ask another fifty thousand. If we go in and we make one request. And we pull our resources, I think it, we may come off as more organized and more attractive to developers. By having someone speak for all of us and having it be organized from beginning to the end. So thank you.
Anybody on? All right, moving forward. Inside the calendar, so in your packets, you do have the minutes for our February fourth study session. The February sixth um study session and regular session. We have a motion to approve, support. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Right? In your packets, you also have the applications for reappointments for Councilman Reed. The planning commission and Mayor Pocam Jackson to the Recreation Advisory Commission.
So moved.
Support. All the favors say aye. Opposed? All right. Next, um do I have a motion to approve of the M M L twenty twenty three? Capital Conference um participation. Support. City Manager, Senator?
Yeah, so the um M M L, they really um released the dates for this year's capital conference. It'll be held in Lansing on April eighteenth and nineteenth. The early bird registration has opened um starting on or before March thirteenth, it's three twenty five a person. And then regular registration is on or before April tenth and that's four twenty five a person. So I will be registering for this conference and attending, just wanted to open this opportunity up to council. Say no, previously a few council members have gone and attended, so? If you would like to attend, just. This is now your opportunity.
What is the process? Who's, is there a term? Because is this the same as the one for new council members?
No, but this is, this is completely different. I have not seen the final agenda for this year's conference, but it will be. Different discussions, different topics covered. Um so it's not the same as the newly elected official training. Um it's a good opportunity to network with other community leaders, other communities here in the state of Michigan. Um I believe the process has been, if you but to allow other members to attend if they've not yet attended this conference. Just so we're not sending the same council person and everybody will be exposed and have an opportunity to learn.
I'm sorry, that's not the way M M L states it because they say that. You need to come because you need to be advised upon, upon what's happening. And I've been. This is my fourth term, I've been every year and it's always something new because there's new rules, there's new. Things going on in different cities. And I know when I started doing Highland Park was because after Mr Vada asked me and I said, no. I went to an M M L meeting and the guy had just been after the shooting in Oklahoma. And he was talking about how people just moved out of the city. And then somebody came in and started redoing the parks and making them so that they were. Uh family oriented, so for something everybody could do in the family and how people started moving back into the city. So I said, well, maybe that ain't a bad thing. So then I decided to do Highland Park. It's always something new. They have people from all over the United States coming in telling you about it and they do say that if you are. Board members or something like we are, you should attend.
Yes, I agree. Uh several of the uh units had their entire. Yes, I agree. Uh, several of the uh, units had their entire council with them. So everybody is receiving the same information and you can work more collaboratively too.
Yeah, they're joint sessions, so you're, you know, having more than one person. I just thought, what's our budget for this?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, some other municipalities may have larger budgets for professional development than we do. Um, so we do have to keep that in mind, um, as much as I would like to be able to see everybody to go, um. You know, like we had said before, we wanted to keep it equitable, so that people who haven't been to a conference recently get the opportunity to go.
So if we were to send all of the council at two thousand two, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. I don't know what's budgeted off the top of my head, but we can look to see. Um, but yes, we have that in mind because there are other MML conferences throughout the years. This is not the only one. They have one in the fall, um, also that council also attends.
Yeah, because the one that we went to was in the fall, right?
Yep.
Yep. So at least, you know, we we wanted to get it out there so that anybody who did want to go. Then get you registered with the early bird.
I'm interested.
Any other comments, Councilman Lawler?
Um, no, I was raising my.
Oh, okay, interesting.
Yeah, I had raised my hand. I went to the newcomers, uh, but this one is different. Um, I'm interested, but I understand if they're on my attention.
Are we good on this topic? All right. Do I have a motion to approve of the Whitman and Associates for the River Trail? Some will.
Support.
And Manager Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we were awarded a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. For the Albion River Trail Extension Three Project. Um, the total estimated project cost is four hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, which includes. Three hundred thousand in grant funding and then there's a thirty-eight percent local match, which comes out to one hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Um, so this will connect the River Trail. It will go down North Albion Street, tie into Holland Park, and then it will. Travel up State Street and tie into McIntosh Park and then connect with the River Trail that was just put down or completed this past year. So I mean, the associates, they provided a proposal to assist with administering the grant as well as provide the professional design services and. Um, construction administration. The proposed scope is a fixed fee of eighty-one thousand four hundred dollars. The full scope of work is within the reimbursable amount for engineering fees, which was um tied into or considered in the grant application process. So that will be covered through through the reimbursable grant that we will get from the state of Michigan. So we are just looking for. Um, approval so that we can get started with this project.
Any questions for City Managers, Mayor? City Council member?
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three oh three to appoint Eric Kraus as the needs representative. For the Calhoun County Consolidated Consolidated Dispatch.
So moved.
Support. So, um.
Those dates correct?
Yep, here.
So it's. It's fit finishing out another time, somebody else's.
Yeah, yes. So Ken Snyder served um as the Albion representative on this board. Um, since he is no longer with the college, um, he's unable to continue to serve in this capacity. So whoever is, uh, Mr. Kraus will be fulfilling his current term, which expires at the end of this year. So we will need to repoint someone to a full term on the on the dispatcher board.
Any questions? Ready for me go?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Brian? Yes.
William?
Yes.
Reed? Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. Motion to approve uh, the consumer's easement for the electrical facilities um for the Albion Street Bridge. Um, work.
So moved.
Support. Director O'Brien?
Give us some info. Over, yeah, so there's this easement is for the relocation of four consumers utility poles. Um, for the North Albion Street Bridge project. As we discussed in study session, they will be relocated further back away from the roadway. Um, this is just required, so part of that bridge project, which is will be getting started here very soon. Easement was um, ran through the city attorney's office. They had some proposed changes. There were changes were made and we were ending up.
Any questions for either our city manager or Director O'Brien? Ready for me go?
Councilmember Brian?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Have a motion to approve the SME's uh, service proposal again for the North Albion Street Bridge President. Some will.
Support.
City Managers?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So SME, they provided a proposal to complete the fabrication inspection for um, the North Albion Street Bridge Project. Um, they will be inspecting the proposed bridge beams and the railing as it is required by MDOT and the Federal Highway Administration. Our project engineer solicited a few proposals for this work. Unfortunately, one of the companies uh, that. We have utilized, they recently shut down, so it's um fabrication inspection division, so they. Um, are recommending we move forward with SME. We've worked with them on some of the other environmental testing here in our community. Um, so the total fee is twenty-seven thousand five twenty-five. In this year's budget, we did estimate about twenty-five thousand to complete this instruction. It is a slightly higher, um, simply because they will be fabricated in Mount Vernon, Ohio, as opposed to Decatur, Indiana. So they're just a little bit um, increase in travel time and reimbursable expenses, but it is a requirement for this project. And they are looking to get done with construction here very soon, so we are recommending approval.
Any questions for City Managers, Mayor or not? Ready for me go?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
They have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three oh four. A resolution to through um, the First Amendment to the Economic Development Corporation bylaws.
Oh.
Support. Um, Bridget, you're still back there. You want to come up and give some information and why we're bringing this forward to council?
Sure.
Um, this comes forward to council because the EDC board had it on their agenda and they approved this. Um, we have twelve board members. I think we see nine of those are appointed by the mayor and then confirmed. By council. Three of those are ex officios, non-voting, so you have appointed voting, you have non-voting. Ex officios, those ex officios are uh, the president of the chamber. The supervisor of Sheridan Township and the supervisor of Albion Township. And those uh, members, as I understand it, according to the bylaws, have been on. The board uh, as ex officios for in informational reasons, so they come to the meeting. And they either give an update or they um, provide feedback if they if they're questioned. Um, it has been the practice, it it appears that the city manager has also been sitting. Uh, in uh, an ex officio seat, but was never put in the bylaws. So I've read back in past minutes and that that person has been represented at the meetings. Um, takes part in the meetings as a regular board member, like a regular ex officio. So the concept is that it would be um. We, so I I've been working very hard to look at what is happening and what should be happening and make sure that we have some congruency. And reconciliation. So this would be one way to reconcile that is to to put to put her on or put the position. Sorry, this would be a position on um, as ex officio. Uh, and that would at least um, have everything working the way it's supposed to work. So um, that's the, that would be the goal is to reconcile the paperwork with what common practice has been.
Any questions for?
Yes. Answer right now my question. Um, um, was we not following procedure?
I um, I I guess not.
I would, I would say after having represented it since since board meetings are open to all. Um, it's a public meeting, so so in the past, the city manager and myself, when I was working at the college, would attend. I I love the fact that it's codified, that 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 there is an expectation that the city manager or his or her representative. Representative would be in present, so yeah.
You had a follow-up question.
We have a lot of people that attend the meetings. This person sits at the table, at the board table, so.
Twenty feet different.
Hmm, okay. I mean, I'm trying to bring some semblance to.
Right.
Our board meetings and do the question is, do we need the city manager to represent the city of Albion? Or because we have the mayor, is it already covered? So I think that's the question that's coming. So um. The reason we have the chamber and the Sheridan Township and um. Albion Township is because they wouldn't really necessarily, you know, we need to partner with them, but we already have the mayor on our board. So that's the question, I guess, is do we need to represent those?
And one of the comments that I made at the study session, and I know you won't be able to be here, but the fact that having Haley there at the table. It's helpful because I'm not in City Hall every day. I, a lot of times I'm only here for council meetings or, you know, every so often, you know, for CDA meetings. But I don't know what's going on in the offices in the day to day. So when topics of conversation come up and they need city input, I may not have that information because I don't know.
Right.
I'm not the city manager, where she sees the information every day she has on foundation, so that's why I figured it would be good to have this. You know, put in the bylaws as like Virgie was saying, it's putting it in place that the city manager should be there regardless who the city manager is.
Right.
To give insight.
And there's an expectation, so I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Councilman Lawler?
Uh, yes, thank you so much. So if the mayor cannot attend a meeting, does the mayor pro tem step in? Colin?
If the, if the mayor's outside and go. The 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 pro tem steps in when the, when the mayor's unavailable or outside the city.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, so since two thousand one, we've had the AEDC. Um, here in the city. Now, um. I've noticed a few things in those questions, um, one being, well, let me just speak to what I've seen going to the meetings personally. Okay, so. Unlike our meeting here, we have no non-voting members sitting with council members. One. So as a practice of procedure, we don't allow non-voting members to sit at the table with us. Now, being that the city manager is not an ex officio in any official capacity. The city manager at these meetings should be sitting in the crowd with the rest of the attendees. Now, um, we do have the mayor there in representation of the city. She also appoints the members of that board. So getting information from the board, being that she's in attendance, would be something that she could bring back to us. Now, I don't see a long history of information that we receive from the EDC meetings either from the mayor. But the capacity in which the city manager serves, she still goes there and participates, much like the directors we have here. Um, I don't see the need in creating an ex officio for this role. I think there's some procedural things that probably need to be addressed. Um, a few of those things being um, just the practice of the open meetings practices. Um, I've I've witnessed board members referring to closed session minutes during a meeting. I've also witnessed a roll call where during roll call, they called upon a non-voting, non-ex officio member. And even the non-affectio official members would be called upon because they cannot vote. So during that procedure, you should only be calling upon the members who are there that can vote to make one. Um, I think what we need instead of um, making an adjustment or amendment to the bylaws. I think what we need to do is direct the EDC to have their board partake in further. Um, training so that they are aware of the procedures that they should be following during meetings. Now, I know um, there are a few new members, but the majority of those members have been on there before I became a councilman here. So much like I had to learn the procedure of um, parliamentary practices, I think they should learn parliamentary procedure as well.
And may I say, I didn't have a chance to talk to him about that. I completely agree. That's a lot of what I was thinking. I will not be at. Meeting tomorrow, because there's, because of that.
City Manager Snyder?
Yes, um, I'm happy serving in whichever capacity council would like. I, in my role as the manager, I plan to attend. I know in the past, whoever was serving in the manager, they attended the meetings. They were in, sat at the table. I know Amy included them at the table with all of the other boards. I don't care where my seat is, as long as I'm, I plan just to attend this public meeting to represent the city and represent my physicians.
But against Councilman Williams, you know, we are elected officials, so that's why we're at this, we're at these seats. Because our constituents voted us in, or the EDC board members, they're volunteers. We're all volunteers in that capacity, so there there's, there's a big difference in regards to. Why people are allowed to be at our table as opposed to at the EDC table.
Well, they also sit at that table under the appointment of the mayor.
The ex officios don't.
Right, but the ex officios are there in capacity of Moringo, Sheridan and Albion Township.
Uh, Chamber Commerce.
Chamber.
And I don't know why those are there. I'm, again, I'm just, this is what's been there. I mean, I guess we could appoint somebody from Albion College too, but then it starts to get a little unwieldy, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it it, there are members of the board that have been appointed. The president or his or her representative. Yeah, they've been voting them.
And I understand that.
And that's just, you know, by the appointment calendar of the of the mayor's council, so yeah. Yeah, I mean, I I guess my opinion about ex officio members is that they definitely are not a burden upon. A board because they don't vote. Uh, creating an expectation, showing the world that we respect the, our city manager. And have expectations of her to be involved in economic development. Um, that position is hopefully a more permanent position, uh, more regular position than someone who's selected to a two-year term, right? So if you have constant turnover at the mayor's position, there's no continuity of expertise with regard to the city, except for the city manager. So having the expectation that they're there, um. Provides our citizens with a reassurance that that people who have experience and knowledge of of past, as well as present, working to the future. Are at their table. And they're at the table, I should say, in the room where it happens, not necessarily at the table.
Mayor Pro Tem Jackson? Well, you had, I think. Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you so much. Uh, we cannot forget the role of a mayor pro tem, please. Um, the second thing is, I would like to call a question.
Well, we still have. Had her.
Yeah, she have. So you called question, but I understand, yeah.
So, I mean.
She called.
But she didn't make, well, I didn't hear the word motion clearly. Councilwoman Lawler made a motion to call the question, so.
I can't do it.
There'd be, there, you have to have a a second as to that motion and then deal with that motion before you could continue discussion.
Yeah.
Support.
Now we call the question, we vote on calling the question. So you you were voting as to whether or not to end debate on this issue.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Jackson?
We're just voting to end the discussion.
Right, oh, yes. So Mayor Pro Tem Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Brian?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
No. So can Mayor Pro Tem Jackson now ask us much?
Oh.
So we call the question, so now we vote on.
They got asked again, I always, I've said this three times before, if you could repeat the question before you get a vote. Because I was thinking that you were asking about.
You have her as a yes or a no.
The vote on whether or not, yes.
No, she was wondering if she had a yes or a no, but she, she, that's what she's asking. Okay. So where are we? Okay, so we add for the discussion.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, we have some discussion. So Mayor Pro Tem Jackson.
Yes, so, um, my, my concern of this resolution and she already knows that, we talked.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Councilwoman Jackson, but you, you had a successful vote to call the question, which means you.
No, 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 you didn't. That's what she just did. Now, I'll step back again and I'm gonna let you guys hear what they just asked back. Yeah, it was four to three.
She, she misunderstood it though.
You have, yeah, so it has to be sixty percent, right?
So I heard, okay, so just, here's what I heard. I heard Councilwoman Reed initially vote no, but then changed her vote to yes in favor of the motion. To, to call the question. Before, before anyone else voted.
That's correct.
So if I'm not mistaken, there were four people that voted yes and three that voted no.
So then the motion happened, so then we are now just voting out the rev.
Councilmember Reed, no. Jackson.
No.
Waller.
No.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
No.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Motion to approve, uh, the manner to steroids and proposal for the accounts conversion. Some move.
Support.
Director Clark, are you going to understand the deal with city managers just to go?
Uh, I'm asleep. Hello, everybody. Thank you, um. I met with the auditor about two weeks ago. We spoke for over an hour and a half. And I was made aware that our chart of accounts needed to be, uh, converted to agree with the, uh, uniform chart of accounts. That was approved by the state of Michigan, November twenty twenty. I was not aware of that, and so he suggested that the trial balance that I send over. That he will work, that's, that's the form that he works off of to start the audit, meet the requirements of the chart of accounts. From November of twenty twenty that was approved by the state. And, uh, so I got a, so I talked with Haley, the city manager. And, uh, the auditor suggested that, uh, we have his company do the conversion. Uh, they have a special department within their firm that only does conversions. They do them for a lot of the, uh, local units. And he could, uh, the, the trial balance will go over around the middle of April. And, uh, he suggests that he could get that done and that we could comply with our numbers. And stay in compliance with the state of Michigan. So I had him send over an engagement letter and spelled out what the fee would be. And how many hours would be involved with it? And so. I think it's a good idea that we hire his firm and let his firm do the conversion. It's a very complicated, uh, project. And I, I want to make sure that it goes, uh, that the conversion goes smoothly. And, um, luckily, this is something that we don't have to do every year. This is something that comes up. Maybe every ten, fifteen years. Uh, when I got the job, uh, the last chart of accounts book that I could find on Tom's shelf was from nineteen eighty-four. And, uh, so I was able to, uh, find a updated chart of accounts from the state of Michigan. And, uh, because the state requires that we implement this for our year end twenty twenty-two, I suggest that we have this done.
Any questions for Director Clark? So, Councilwoman French.
So, uh, normally something of this expense would require bids. So is that something that's a hard and fast rule or we? Are they the only company that can do this? I mean, I'm not opposed to it at all. I just like. Just thought we, if we had to go over five thousand dollars, it was like a bidding process we had to go through? No? Thank you, Colin.
Accounting services are considered professional services and under the ordinances, professional services do not require bidding.
Oh, okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Is somebody else?
Oh, yes, I did. I, I just wanted to know since something, I mean, since it's been in place since you said nineteen eighties.
Uh, the last updated uniform chart of accounts was done November of twenty twenty. But what I was talking about was when I first got here, um, I wanted to get a uniform chart of accounts. And so I looked on the shelf that Tom had, and the one that he was using was from nineteen eighty-four. And so I went online and I downloaded the latest conversion. And so I, any new accounts or the part, or any new accounts that I set up since I've been here, I made sure that they followed that. But we do have to have our whole accounting system converted over, so it agrees with the November twenty twenty uniform chart of accounts. The process.
Yes.
Okay. City manager say, yeah, so the Department of Treasury, they released the final version in November twenty twenty, but they did not require local units to implement it. For a few years, just due to COVID, they did an implementation process. Since we had, uh, fiscal year end of December thirty-first, we were required, we had until December thirty-one of last year to have it implemented. So we missed that deadline, um, and we're working to get it done, so we have the proper funds in place when we go with, with audits.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this wasn't a problem when we got, because we just went through an audit, right?
Right, but every audit was on twenty twenty-one and we weren't required to have it implemented during that audit, so that was not a problem.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, so the auditor just thinks it's a good idea for us to implement it. So when he looks at our trial balance, it will be, it'll have all the updated accounts and we will be in compliance going forward.
Any other questions?
And I just say thank you to Director Clark for, since he's come on board, he has done tremendous, um. Work within the finance department to get things caught up and where they need to be.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed, yes, and Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
That motion to approve the twenty twenty-three revised fee schedule. Support.
Uh, before we proceed, I just wanted to make counsel aware of something while we were, while you were discussing that last item, I did. Um, I was looking at our chart of motions, uh, that we have attached to our procedural rules. It won't, it doesn't affect, uh, the vote that you took, because obviously the underlying vote on the main motion was four to three. But for future reference, if we do come up with the issue of a motion to call the question, our rules do require a two-third vote, affirmative vote. To end, to limit debate, so it would need to be a five to two vote to end debate in the future. Just an FYI. It's not one that we use very often, but it is contained in our appendix to our council rules.
May I ask a question regarding that? What about the idea of reconsideration?
Uh, it, a, a vote may be reconsidered, yes.
I, I thought.
So we had a motion and support for the revised schedule, correct? Yes. City manager say.
Oh, yeah, yes. Um, so the rental registration ordinance, it was just approved three months ago. It will go into effect, um, in March. So for that goes into effect, we need to establish a fee for that program. So included in your packet is the recommended fee schedule for that. I made this found on page seventy-two of your packet. Um, when rental registration, it is a twenty-five dollar fee and then there, um, is a registration fee by June thirty of annual fee. Um, there's a late registration fee and then the annual inspection fee, um, based off of you, um, how many units you have. Um, this fee schedule needs to be agreeable both between the city as well as Safe Bill there, since they are the ones who will be providing the service with them. And in talking with them, this is the lowest that we can go to make the service worthwhile. Director Arnold, I don't know if you have anything that you would like to add or include in that.
Just to reiterate what the city manager said, which is that, uh, us adopting this fee schedule is our half of the fees. Uh, of the fee section of the service agreement that we entered into with, uh, Safe Bill here. So if you do want a change to this fee schedule, we'll have to make sure it's agreeable to them if we want them to. Uh, conduct the rental inspection service for us, which I do. So, uh, I would definitely like that to be something you consider, uh, before taking your vote tonight. I know that this section of fees is the, uh, part that is most disagreeable to rental property owners in the city. Um, so I'm sure you've got some of that on your mind. Uh, I'd be happy to take any questions you have on that, but. We're comfortable with the fee schedule there and we trust Safe Bill's recommendation that that's the cost of them providing the service.
The, the, just, um, so you all know that the registration fee that will come to the city, the inspection fees will go to Safe Bill for providing that service. So that will be a new revenue for the city to help build capacity within the planning department.
Any questions for either Director Arnold, yeah, Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you so much. Um, is there a copy of this on the website? I've had, um, a couple of people ask me about the rental certification and, um, the fees.
There will be, the minute you vote yes. No, so this version of the fee schedule is not available to the public yet. It's the draft version for your agenda. But, uh, minus any minor edits that Jill or Haley would have, this is what will be presented to the public when they look up city of Albion fees. This should be the first thing that pops up.
Yes, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. City clerk, come here.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
That says our discussion, uh, the barn part, or is there, um? Mayor Pro Tem Jackson. Yes, I, I passed up that information for you guys. And so the discussion that I basically wanted wasn't, I had the word approval behind it as well, was to be able to proceed or go further as we discussed. So, um, just the cleanup of the lily pads, I like to bring back the dollars and cents of what they were talking about. And they did say there were grants to help get those lily pads and I'm taking care of, but at the same token, still need to talk to, um. City manager as well, talking about dragon, not dragon, but, uh, the dam study, are you trying to still go forward with that?
But still, it's going to be completed. They're, um, waiting to do the final testing for that, which will be done in the spring and then that will be. That report will be completed. They will come to council with a formal recommendation as part of proceed.
Okay, so, so clean, clean up the lily pads is, uh, a short term. And so it would help the resident, as you heard when he came through, she was not here, uh, but, um. The chemical that they would put out there, the chemical would not, um, hurt the fish or any of that, or it's not harmful. So that was one recommendation I wanted in the park. The picnic tables of, um, seven new picnic tables out there, five regular ones and two, uh, were access. Where one end you could see on there is not there, that seat where anybody with a wheelchair could be pushed up. Um, underneath the table and then the grills, I would like to see, um, if it would be cheap to restore those or have them replaced. Um, a couple benches out there would be nice, come in the park, new trash cans. And then I was looking at some of the grants that they had out there and I wish I had a rabbit when I was looking, I was just so into it. That if you know you made this part where individuals could come out there and do exercise. Which like four of these or maybe a couple of them out there as well, then there's grants to, um, take care of. The accommodations of the grant, I mean, of the park as well and replacing that big dock that they have. And there's one area where they can already back down, but to add on the other side, another dock. So that they could, um, get their boats out. This park is used a lot, especially with, um, fishing. And just the momentum of, of being quiet is a still, is a still area. So, yeah, fourth of July, so, uh, the estimate was fifty thousand dollars. So I was, um, no more than just needed, uh, okay, if I could just get things, some good things measured. Um, if I need to do that on my own, then I can do that on my own or do that, need to pay someone to, um, measure. Uh, some of these items, I can bring a tally of exactly what they are.
No, I think that's what we have, um, city staff would be able to help do that. I would, um, make the recommendation, we do have, uh, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And I believe you, you and Councilmember Reed both serve on that. I would have this discussion, start with that group, let them weigh in on. Um, that park space as well, along with, um, with the project at the, with this amount. We just approved our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. With that, any major project improvement projects that we want to do to our park space, I would encourage that we include that in the plan. That sets us up better to obtain and secure grant funding. Um, a lot of times when you apply for grants, they want to see, is this project identified in any of the plans that you have at the city? Um, so it just makes your application stronger. Um, we can always amend that to include this. And, but I would recommend that we start this conversation, um, with the Recreation, um, Task Force. I talked with, um, met with Councilmember Reed a couple of weeks ago. We discussed Holland Park and McCullough Park. We had that same conversation that we, at the upcoming next task force meeting, we will present her, um, proposed projects. That she would like to see in those park spaces to that group, have that discussion, they and then would make a formal recommendation to, to the city council for approval.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Have we did Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, uh-huh, thank you so much.
Okay, next is our discussion, uh, the purchases and bids process. I'm sorry. Work session. Pardon me, you wanted a discussion?
Oh, I just want, wanted to know when were we going to, uh. Continue the work session we had started before.
So after our last meeting with, um, Councilmember Reed's of future agenda requests, I did reach out to Mr. Gu Chao to have a follow-up conversation. He was happy to see that we've already contacted him to possibly hold another session. I did meet with him last week and he recommends that we wait until, to schedule anything until he provides that formal report from our first session. He said he will have that to us here within the next week or so, um, and then it will require, um, me and my staff to get together to. Um, review and provide our recommendations back to council and then we can have a further discussion on scheduling a next session. But he'd be happy to come out and continue those conversations, but his, his recommendation was to wait, see, um, review the information that he has provided to us. Before we schedule a next session. So once I get that report, we will come back, share that with council and then we can go on to share.
Any other comments? All right, discussion on the purchase of the bench process, Councilwoman Williams.
Yeah, so, um, I just wanted to make sure that we had this conversation so that we knew how the bid process was supposed to take place. Um, so that we wouldn't have conversation around these that could, um, be misinterpreted. So, um, I had Attorney Hartness provide us with some information about the bid process and how they should go. Um, hopefully that'll be helpful to all of us going forward, so that when we do have conversation around this, we know what the city can do. We know what the city can do and what the city can't do, um, so that we can keep everything above board.
So the, the ordinance that the council has in their packet, um. A lot of these ordinances regarding finance were done back in the nineties. And I'm sure councils, even, and even the new council members are familiar with the, um. Current spending limits that are, are in that ordinance. It's basically. Um, the manager can authorize anything up to five thousand dollars that's already budgeted. Uh, manager has to notify council of any. Anything basically that, that, uh, she purchases in excess of a thousand dollars. There's a bidding process in excess of five thousand dollars. So. The ordinance is almost thirty years old, five thousand dollars thirty years ago. Is completely different than what five thousand dollars or, you know, is today. There's very, very little that the city purchases. That's less than five thousand dollars. So my suggestion to council would be. As we look at this ordinance is that you consider significantly raising the manager's budgeted purchase authority. Um, to be something more consistent with twenty twenty-three. Um, certainly I, I don't, I would recommend leaving the reporting requirement in there so that council's aware in writing of expenditures, but. Uh, some changes I would suggest by way of example, when, when a contract comes before council for approval. And, um, when the council subsequently approves that contract, the manager, I, I think it's redundant to have the manager come back to council and then. Request approval for dispersments on this contract. Um, if something is budgeted. Uh, as an expenditure and councils approve that budget realistically, the manager, I mean, the councils already approved. Certain amount of, uh, expenditures. I don't think it's redundant to have the manager have to come back and have you vote on it again. So in, in addition, I would, I would suggest making those changes and I would suggest raising that five thousand dollar threshold. And giving the managers some more discretion. Certainly she'll still report to council on those expenditures, but. Five thousand dollars in terms of most city, city expenditures is not. And, and that's why you see so many expenditures come before you.
Councilman.
Um, so nineteen ninety-five thousand dollars is equivalent to about twelve thousand dollars now. With thirty-eight reset inflation. So. I agree with you.
Yes, I was going to ask in terms of what is, um. Average, you know, in terms of equivalents, twelve thousand, ten thousand. Uh, but we have to remember also that. Trust and, and transparency is very important in this community. So hopefully we're not putting it too high, then there's only going to be, um. Questions, you know, questions about, and that's all, yeah, questions about what is being spent, so we want to avoid that. But we want the understanding that it is outdated, five thousand dollars is outdated and there is an equivalency. And this is why we're doing what we're doing, because it can easily be perceived as, you know, oh. You know, just let her spend twice as much for what reason? And we don't want that.
So probably something that I, and I, and I, and I think your point is well taken, uh, Councilwoman Davis. What I would suggest is, again. Leaving the provision in there that, that the manager is required to report to council in writing any purchase over a thousand dollars. So no matter what she spends over a thousand dollars, you're gonna know about it. Um, so I think that takes care of that aspect of transparency. I think raise the ceiling on, on the spending. Such that, um, she has a discretion to spend to a certain amount without having to get bids, but you could certainly put. As a caveat to that, that the manager still needs to solicit proposals. And so she's still seeking the lowest. Uh, the, the lowest responsible proposal, but you know, the, the reality is some of these, some of the things that we encounter. Um, as administration with the city, uh. I, I'm sure the manager can speak to this better than I can. She puts out a bid and doesn't get any responses. And so a lot of times for services and capital improvements that the city needs, the manager actually has to approach those companies and say, hey. I need a quote because they're not going to come and bid.
Right.
And so we could certainly build in something that the manager has to see. Three proposals for services for a certain amount or something like that. But I think the good thing about this is she won't have to come before council and say.
Everything.
I need to, I need to replace a. A case of equipment at the water treatment plant that costs seventy-five hundred dollars.
Right, yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Um, she'll notify you about it. You'll see it in a, in a written report and, and whatever frequency the council deems appropriate, but. You know, thirty years later, I, I think council should consider raising that ceiling because. Things have changed a bit.
Yeah, and I agree. I just want, you know, the public to see there is accountability, there is reporting, there is transparency. So that's us.
And included in the second, it's in today's packet, you do get revenue and expenditure reports too, so that's there as well.
Know that, but just saying, putting, putting it out.
Putting it out there, right.
So the other, the other thing I wanted to mention, when we do deal with proposals for companies and. Closed bids and things like that, and this was a, a conversation I have with Councilman Williams is. There are certain things that we have built into an ordinance that we can consider and give preference to by way of example, if it falls into certain. Uh, bid ranges and one of those bidders happens to be a resident, you can, you, you can consider. Two bids to be equal, even though the residents might be slightly higher. Um, you can consider their qualifications, you can consider their prior experience. One thing, um, that should not be a consideration, uh, when you're looking at bids is protected classes. And so we should not be looking at gender, ethnicity, race, age, things like that. Because that's a good way for the city to get sued. Um, certainly we want to encourage diversity in the bidders, but we just have to be careful about that. So that was just something I wanted to make sure council is aware of.
Any other comments?
So I'll bring in, I'll bring a proposed ordinance to council at a future meeting.
All right, future agenda items. Anything specific council would like to see on an agenda?
Also in mind, important next meeting. Also in mind for the next meeting. Agenda items, future agenda items.
So agenda items. All right. Public comment, if we have anybody in chambers that would like to stand and address council. May do so at this time and three minutes is yours. Anybody on? City manager's report.
So a copy of my report was included in the package. It's a few things I wanted to highlight. We also have updates from all of the departments, um, all of the city departments as well. Um, G D A, they held their regular meeting on Wednesday, February eighth. Their next meeting will be, um, Wednesday, March eighth at seven thirty. Um, the city E D C and chamber, um, we all met, um, the director and CEO on Thursday, February ninth. Just to discuss how to better support each other's organizations and kind of similar to, um, what Virgie presented on. Just kind of streamline the process on getting new businesses started. So looking forward to continuing to work for those other organizations. Um, there was a, I attended a county broadband task force meeting. Our intern with the Ford, to the Ford Institute, they are in the process of developing a resident welcome guide. So I'm very happy to have one updated. The last one was released in nine. Ninety-something, so well overdue. Um, so very excited to have that. It'll have all of the important. Contact information for department, departments, reference a few ordinances that are very important to our residents, um, to make them aware. Um, last week was a, a very exciting week for the city of Albion. We, um. Were approved for about one point five million dollars in grant funding. We received one million dollars through the M D N R Spark Grant, um, program to do the second phase for the McIntosh Park improvements. And then we were awarded almost, um, five hundred thousand dollars through FEMA, um, the assistance to firefighters grant program to go towards. Um, purchasing a new fire truck. So it was a very exciting, exciting week for the city of Albion and, and bringing in some outside resources. To, to address our needs here in the community. I'm so happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for city manager? Great, with tonight information. Councilmember Hammond.
Yep, um, I would say thank you to, um, the audience members that showed up today and spoke. Um, out about things that affect you in the community. We definitely appreciate you all coming out. Um, and we hope that you all will consistently come out to be informed about things that are taking place in the community. Thank you.
I know I've mentioned this to council before, but as we are in what I'll just refer to as tax season. I'd ask you to please remind your constituents that there is a local income tax. Um, I'm currently working with our finance department, um. In collecting delinquent income tax and I'm signing literally hundreds of, of warrants for failing to pay or failing to. To, uh, file local taxes, so. I just ask you in, in the precinct meetings or wherever, just. Remind people there is a city income tax and, and the, the city sends letters and warnings and. Reminders and certified letters and, but eventually. Would they land in my office and then there's arrest warrants and I really prefer not have, not to have to get to that point, so. And we're in another tax year, so.
I just want to, um. Share the delight I had when I, uh, attended the reception for Ford at Schuler's last week. Uh, that was very, very encouraging. I did, and I, I, I shared that I spoke with the mayor. Uh, and Marshall, who would like to collaborate, do some collaborative activities and programs, but the mayor here. You know, in terms of, uh, our school district, you know, we have one school district, so maybe some things can happen in the community. Uh, so I'm very excited about what Marshall is doing because it is going to trickle to Albion. If we have ours, ourselves together, you know, and we are able to communicate effectively and follow through and. Yeah, have some goals and plans in place. I think, I think good things are going to happen within the next five years in Albion.
Any other comment? I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, first person, meeting adjourned eight forty-two P M.
You can hang around for just a few minutes so I can take your account picture for.